Okay, we will call this special meeting of the Encinitas City Council to order at 4:01. And first, we'll start out with a roll call.
Yes, Councilmember San Antonio.
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember O'Hara.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Here.
And Mayor Ayers.
Here.
Record will show that all members of the City Council are present.
Okay, tonight, we're here for one agenda item for this special meeting. And in special meetings, we don't have oral comments, so all the comments, when we take public input, will be on Agenda Item 1, the one and only item. Item 1 is the discussion and direction of the city fiscal year 2025 to 2026 Operating and Capital Improvement Budget. And the Director of Finance, City Treasurer Gallup, is the staff member. And we'll start out with a staff report.
All right, thank you very much. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. This is the third public workshop scheduled to receive direction before introducing the fiscal year 2025-2026 Operating and Capital Budget on May 28. My name is Tom Gallup. I'm the Finance Director. And with me this afternoon is the Director of Engineering, Jill Bankston, and Finance Manager/Budget Officer, Kelly Sanderson. The agenda for this afternoon is to provide a brief staff presentation highlighting updates made since the second workshop. These include updated projects and estimates to the engineering projects by status list, otherwise known as the donut list, revised construction estimates for temporary fire station number one, the revised amount available for appropriation next year, and new projects and estimates received since the last workshop. The discussion this afternoon will focus on using the budget calculator, which includes proposed capital projects for next fiscal year and provides a tool for preparing the proposed CIP budget. Staff has included estimates for three projects on the engineering projects by status list. These are improvements to both Clark Avenue and Union Street and storm drain mainline improvements on South Vulcan Avenue. Also, staff's estimate for temporary fire station number one has been increased by $85,000 since the last workshop. The appropriation for this project will occur this fiscal year and will reduce the amount available for appropriation next fiscal year. Appropriating $285,000 for temporary fire station number one, this fiscal year will reduce the amount available for appropriation to $7.25 million next fiscal year. I will now turn the presentation over to City Manager Campbell, who will discuss the additional projects included for consideration since the last workshop in more detail.
Thank you, Director Gallup. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. So after the second workshop, we went ahead and received a presentation from our fire chief, as well as the Chair of the Public Health and Safety Commission. And out of that, there came some recommendations that we had with the gap analysis, so some of these items can be added. But the first one I wanted to talk about was the permit parking zone. This software, this actually came out of the ordinance meeting that we had, and it dealt with Via Molina and some of our other parking zones within the city. And council wanted us to look at a more efficient and effective way of being able to handle permit parking in the city of Encinitas. So together, the Director of Engineering and our Director of IT went ahead and solicited some quotes for a permit parking software. So we had then in at $80,000 to get that software, which would then help manage the permit parking throughout the city of Encinitas. The next item up was the vegetation management contract. This was to increase our vegetation management, especially in some high-fire severity zones. So this would be a $50,000 add. We already have a current contract that lies within Public Works, and this would be in addition to that amount as well. We also had the citywide evacuation guide and signage, so this would be for the fire department to be able to develop a guide on evacuation routes within the city and also have proper signage out in some of our high-fire severity zones. The next would be printed educational material for 7,500, and this would help with the community outreach and education. And then the last item that came from that council item was the urban forester or biologist contract. We currently have recon that works with our Encinitas Habitat Stewardship Program, so this would help to identify any sensitive habitat so that we don't, you know, cut the wrong things. So we figured, we already have an existing contract, but we would add $10,000 to that ongoing contract. So the two new, or the total request would be $157,500. The $10,000 is actually capital, so we don't have the 20% contingency reserve, so the total amount would be $189,000 in new asks for operating in $10,000 in capital due to the permit parking software, as well as some of the recommendations from the fire department and public health and safety. The next item is, we did receive a couple other estimates after the workshop, first being Clark Avenue improvements. We have met with several residents on both Clark and Union Street with Councilmember O'Hara to go over some needs that the communities have. So these are a couple improvements that would be around $85,000, and that would be an enhanced signalhead at Lucadia, two pedestrian crossings, which is a rapid rectangular flashing beacon, and some lower pavement speed limit pavement marking for a total of $85,000. Also, too, we have the South Lucadia Storm Drain Main Line. This would be Vulcan Avenue from Union Street to Moonlight Beach, and this is for design-only at 500. And then the last, there's a lot of talk about temporary fire station six, and that was on the gap analysis as well that the fire chief presented. Currently, one of the areas that we are looking at is Lucadia Oaks Equestrian Park. We actually own that. We're also looking at some possible land with the county. That is located in what is an RRFP, so it's Rural Residential Flood Plane. So in order to put any type of temporary building or permitted or anything like that, we would have to go through some studies. And Director Bankston is here as well to talk through that. So this would be for design and permitting before we could actually put any temporary or full structure there. So those were some of the new estimates that we received after workshop, too, and those have been added to the budget calculator for council consideration. So thank you. And we also do have the fire chief here if you have any questions on any of those items.
Okay. And does that conclude the staff report?
Just a note that with the addition of the third public workshop, staff's adjusted the budget development schedule slightly. Introduction of the budget is now scheduled for May 28. That's the City Council meeting. And adoption of the proposed budget is scheduled for June 18. And this concludes staff's presentation. Staff's available to answer any questions you have.
Okay, do we have any preliminary questions? Deputy Mayor Lyons.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And this may be for staff or for the city manager. Is, I'm looking at Row 16, which is the Beach Street Trail item, and I just want to ask if there's any reason that the funding for that could not come out of the trail development fees? The, yeah.
Yeah, so I can take that one. So we do have a rec trails fund that comes out of mitigation fees. As of January 15 of this year, it was very small. It was 1,900. I did have finance. Go ahead and look. As of today, we have just a little over $24,000, so absolutely. So we could use $24,000 of the rec trail mitigation fees to offset that 100 instead, and then that would free up the additional for general fund.
And as a follow-on question to that, is there any way that you can anticipate what additional funds will go into that fund this year? Is there a way to anticipate what that could be?
We've got some development coming up. I will say rec trail funds is one of the ones that is very minimally funded. I mean, we can definitely look as they come in, but that's the current balance right now. But it is very small compared to our park development acquisition. It's a very, very small percentage, but we can definitely keep track of that. And we can certainly, as that money comes in, depending on how the trail progresses, we could always go ahead and allocate to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, is this the time to ask about the general fund availability of the East? Or is that something to talk about in our conversation?
I think it's a question of clarification, yeah.
Yeah, so the question is, just for everybody, is that there is 1.721 million in Santa Fe East that is general fund money. And I just wanted to make sure, to clarification, that that is usable money for maybe either all, but, or just topping off some of these that may not be fully funded?
So if I could have Director of Engineering Jill Bankston pull up, we have a table. So part of one of the things that we were asked as well is, what is the remaining funding on Santa Fe West and what is the funding on Santa Fe East? So we've kind of got a mix of traffic mitigation. We've got some ATP grant, H-SIP grant. There was some funding from Senator Blakespear, as well as general fund. So right now, currently, the direction from council was we are to observe how Santa Fe is working. We have a community meeting coming up on May 13, which is actually next Tuesday, to receive input from the public. There's a survey out also. Of course, we will be bringing this back to council on May 28 in another public meeting. So depending on what comes out of a lot of the community outreach and some things that people are looking at, we may, with recommendations from City Council, do some adjustments to Santa Fe West. And as you can see, there's a couple estimated contractor settlement amounts, depending on some of the claims that we've gotten on the project as well. So we've got some money identified. But there is $1,721,000 in general fund on Santa Fe East. We, of course, want to see what we need to do with Santa Fe West. Any money that we have left over is general fund, and depending on the direction we get from City Council on Santa Fe East, you know, it can always be returned to the general fund, depending on future council direction on that project.
Thank you.
So just to clarify further on the Santa Fe West, that's actually mostly traffic mitigation fees, wouldn't have to be used on that type of project, correct? And that's very different than Santa Fe East, which is primarily general funds, which, if defunded from there, can be used anywhere.
That is correct.
In part or whole, depending on whatever, okay. Great, that answered one of my questions. One other question while we're on, got the Santa Fe up there. The 680 and the ATP grant, is there any timing associated with the usage of that?
I would defer to Director Bankston.
Yeah, we have about a year before we need to get out to construction on that one. This is a grant that requires us to construct a bike lane. It fills in sidewalk gaps, and it provides funding for ADA-compliant curb ramps. So that's the scope of the approved project. So if this council decides not to move forward with that project, we would have to repay the design funding that we've been reimbursed for so far. So we'll have to have a conversation about how that project moves forward.
And is it limited to Santa Fe East only, or can it be used on Santa Fe West? No, just Santa Fe East, bike, handicap ramps, sidewalks, things like that?
You got it.
For improvements, but if we, on Santa Fe East, yeah, so, so we look and we could do whatever we do with that, but we have to do it within a year. Some grants are extendable. Is there any option for a year extension or a two-year extension if we need it?
We just got our one-year extension, so I don't think we're eligible for any more extensions.
Okay. But do you know for sure, or just not sure?
I don't, so I'll get some information back to you.
Okay, great. If nobody else has questions, I just wanted, on the donut chart, on the various different projects, WW down at the bottom, the Union Street improvements, and the Clark XX, the Clark improvements, can we get, like, just a, what extent of changes are those? What is that project?
Yeah, so for Union Street, the request from the community was to add a DG Pedpass, which would go on the north side of Union Street. That would require some removal of improvements that are in our right-of-way currently. They've also requested drainage improvements, undergrounding of utilities, and then a roundabout at Saxony and Union. So that's the full scope on Union. Clark had kind of a mix of smaller items. City manager went through some of the smaller ones that total about $85,000, so some minor improvements related to RRFBs and a signalhead adjustment. But the larger piece of that is a request to widen Clark Street, kind of at the northern end where the intersection is with Lucadia Boulevard, to provide a little bit more capacity and stacking for left turners and for people who want to go straight or turn right. So that would require moving at least one telephone pole, moving the signal at the southeast quadrant, and removing and replacing the sidewalk further to the east.
And is there a design phase? And then, this is design and construction?
Yes.
And is there a split? If we wanted to fund design to get it moving forward, is there some subset, 10%, 15%?
Yeah, typically about 10%.
About 10%, okay. And...
Can I get clarification?
Sure.
The residents do not want the roundabout. That was clear in our discussion.
Do not want what?
They're in the, of Union do not want the roundabout. That's a staff item. The residents prefer stop sign, which is coming up, initiated item. On the, so just to clarify, scope of the project is flexible, I would say, at this point. It's not, I would say it's probably not set in stone.
So are we talking Union right now?
On Union, yeah.
And so, does the estimate, does or does not include a roundabout? I assumed it did not.
I heard Engineer Bankston mention a roundabout at the end of Union and Saxony. The residents do not wish for that, and they are actually, we have initiated item coming forward next week per their request. But I assume that makes a difference in the cost.
Okay.
That's the only reason I'm mentioning it.
So that number includes a roundabout?
It includes a quick build roundabout, yes.
Quick build roundabout, okay. Okay, moving on, is there for, and this, I don't know if this is capital, it could be, Jill, it could be Josh, probably the city manager, I'll go to the city manager. On Fire Station 1, is there any money required, additional allocation in this budget for Fire Station 1 temporary?
So it was, we needed an extra $285 to finish it, so we had money from this year, and most of it's coming from the facilities fund, so that's not general fund, so most of this, so we needed $285 additional from the general fund for the temporary station.
Okay, and that's all covered in our worksheet?
Yes.
So we're good there. And I think I got my question, that's my questions. Deputy Mayor Lyons.
I'd just like to add a little bit of information. It's not necessarily a question for staff, but I think now's a good time to do it. At our last budgeting meeting, there were some, there was some interest in a little bit more information on, it's Row 24, Historic Context Statement. And I didn't have the chance to add that last week, or last time we met. And so I'll take, I take the opportunity to do that now, so that as people are commenting, and if anyone has comments or questions about it, that that will clarify, hopefully clarify what that item is. So I do want to start by saying that community character and preserving our community character is part of our strategic planning. As a group, we've brought forward that that's of interest to our community, and we are always looking for opportunities for, how can we, as your city council, get behind really good things, really smart things, that would help to preserve our community character? And over the last six months, staff has been working, based on a council member-initiated item, to put forward some ideas about what the city itself can do to help bring forward historic preservation in our community. And we've gotten a lot of support from some of our partners, like the Encinitas Historical Society, the Encinitas Preservation Association, the Heritage Ranch. And Councilmember Schaefer and I have brown acted buddy to talk about where are some of the opportunities for historic properties, because it is really, truly, an important asset that we have, historic neighborhoods, historic properties. So to not go on too long, I do want to say that this item is a first step in looking and to helping support our community and their interests to preserve and to profile historic neighborhoods. Councilmember Schaefer and I went to visit the boathouses. We, you know, it's a good example, there's, they're also doing a fundraiser right now, but it's a good and prominent example of, these historic resources aren't getting any younger. And so they, as time goes on, the need to preserve them, if we're interested in preserving, becomes more valuable to us. So I, I'm looking for, with this, with this item, we're looking forward for a way that we can have a success in supporting the community character through a first step in helping our communities and our neighborhoods with historic districts. And our staff looked at the whole range of, well, what would, what would be good first steps? And we've already talked about how, having the state involved and going through the state Historic Preservation Office might be the optimum thing to do, but the price tag on that was, we'd have to create a historic preservation ordinance, and we'd have to do a lot of things that would cost more, like $500,000. We thought, well, we're not, we're not that city that can afford that. But what is the next level of help that the city can provide? And what, what we think it is, is the Historic Context Statement, which articulates what the layers of history are, and also gives guidelines to neighborhoods, so that when they want to create a neighborhood historic district, that they'll have the cookbook for being able to do that. And I do know that one of the neighborhoods in my district, the Composer's District, is interested in a, in forming a historic district. And there may be others out there once we get the idea out and talk to them. So I didn't know if there was anything else that could be added to that. Councilmember Schaefer.
Well, yeah, not so much, I just wanted to get from staff what exactly that would entail, just to be confirmed what that gets us. Obviously, Councilmember Lyons did a good job of basically overviewing it, but what, what does that give us? Does it give us a chance to, at least the way I understood it, was it now gave us a starting point for follow-on projects that we could, at some level, from, for a different reason, but we could end up putting some historic space, or sorry, open space into this, stuff that can protect us from some of the current state overreach as well. So it's not just a one-sided thing, but I wanted to see what the 140 gets us in that context statement, and really what that first domino looks like, and how it'd help us, not just in this area, but in multiple areas.
Hi there. Patty Anders, Planning Manager. We did do some initial research, and the Historic Context Statement would, is basically the first step, and it really just does an analysis of the social, cultural, economic, all of the things in Encinitas. It doesn't necessarily set us up to prevent local, or have more local control, if that's part of the question, but it, yeah, it would just really be the first steps in identifying what our historic statement is for Encinitas. And then it would have, it would, from there, it would develop a program so that we could have established criteria to allow the council to move forward with a historic district if it's council's desire.
Copy. And this 140K is for a consultant, correct?
Correct. It's very specific. Staff doesn't have the experience you, it would have to be either an architectural preservationist or a archaeologist or a historian. It's very kind of a niche expertise.
Got it. And then the follow-on question to that, this is, it doesn't sound like we're creating the wheel on this spot. We might be reinventing the wheel. And from other cities that have plans like this, is there a way for us to take the parts and pieces from the cities that would mimic us within our own staffing, where this wouldn't require the entire 140? It'd be more of a review than an actual initial statement created out of, you know, quote-unquote "thin air" for the first time type thing?
So we have two historic statements that were done for the North 101 specific plan in downtown Encinitas, so we would utilize those existing resources. But it's not something that staff has the ability. We always manage our consultants to make sure that they stay within scope and budget, but it's not something that I would feel comfortable or our team. We just don't have that in-house expertise, unfortunately.
Copy. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Hara.
Sure. So do other, other cities have historic districts? There's nothing new, right?
Correct.
Would our historic district protect our zoning? In other words, if there was a historic district, the Composer's District, and state mandate claimed they could build a R30 there, would it protect it?
Yeah, I'd have to look at the details of the state law and how it aligns with historic preservation typically.
So I looked at it, and it says it has to be either California State Parks or California Historic District. Would this establish either of those?
No, if the council, we're looking at just the council's district.
So, so it doesn't protect us from anything? It's a, it's a series of placards that help us design to set up to take care of the things we view historically important. Does it, do we have any archaeologists that live in the city? People who are interested in historic preservation? Self-question, I guess the answer's yes. So I guess what I'm, what I'm looking for is what this gets us. This seems like a nice-to-have and not a need-to-have. So I'm a little anxious about looking at something that would be really nice-to-have, that I think we could actually put some, some residents together to do ourselves with staff. And then we could take $140,000 and go with that directly into the boathouses if you really want to spend it. Goal for this year should be to identify the things that are important to have over the things that are nice-to-have. Historic context is very nice-to-have. If it doesn't provide us any protection from the state, which is one of our top priorities, it seems like it'd be good to put it off for a year, when we have more money, and put this money towards something like our upcoming parking permits that we're going to need to deal with the state mandate. So just kind of leave it out there with that, that I think that we are looking at something that is a nice-to-have here and not a need-to-have. And I ask council to keep that in their thoughts when they're voting on this issue.
Okay. If I could redirect this a little bit, I think we're still in the clarification, I think we slipped into argument at this point. Are there any other questions of clarification? And Jim, are you done? I'm not trying to take the floor from you.
Yeah, yes.
So if you're done, I'll recognize Deputy Mayor Lyons.
So I was just going to respond to Councilmember O'Hara in two, in two areas. One is that there's really nothing that, like this, that protects us from the state, so I think that's a pretty high bar to ask a historic properties effort to, to achieve. But what, I think that the benefits are, are surrounding the awareness our community has about the value of our character. And I know us, once we begin to rally around something, we get really engaged. And I, I think this has been a missing piece, where we, we have, we have an interest in the community and preservation, but we don't have the policy in place to do it. So this won't achieve everything, and I agree, it won't, but really, it's intended to be a first step in, in awareness. And I'll, I'll cut it short at that.
Thank you. So with that, I don't see any other questions. We'll go to public speakers on the item.
Yes, we do have nine. I'll call you three at a time. The first three, Christine Schindler, Elena Thompson, and then Sheri Yardley.
All right, totally wasn't prepared to be first. So welcome back. Good to have you back, Deputy Mayor. I've been continuing thoughts for you and Rob and your family. So I'm doing something kind of different, kind of like we did at Strategic Planning, because I'm always talking about mobility, mobility choices, active transportation, safety... safety, and we have had another fatality. Before I go into that, just to let you know, there's a lot going on this week. Today is National Bike to School Day, so hopefully you saw a lot more kids walking, riding, and rolling to school. I was at Paul Ecky, it's fantastic. You see the long line of cars and sleepy kids, and you see bikes and scooters and people walking, and they're happy and they're interacting, and they're ready for school. So hopefully you'll engage in some of these activities. Really appreciate that we have this in our community. So then, on a heavier note, I just wanted us to do a moment of silence. Emery on Encinitas Boulevard, our most recent traffic death. Now, we've had two deaths on Encinitas Boulevard in four months, and other deaths as well. So if we can, just take a moment to hold them in our thoughts and their families. So I'll recognize with this, there's many different reasons, sorry, many different reasons why things happen. When you're in a car, you're protected. When you're walking, riding, using transit, and other forms of mobility, you aren't as protected. And each one of those scenarios, there are different things involved. However, no one should die on a roadway because they've decided to move around the city in something other than a car. And for that matter, no one should die on our roadways in cars. So I just want to push forward the idea and the goal of Vision Zero, coming to zero traffic deaths. And I think Judy Brolfine's going to speak to law enforcement, speeding. I'm sure my friend Michael will speak to that as well. But there's many ways that we can make a difference. And when I come up here and I talk about active transportation, it's not just about riding a bike or walking, it's about public health, it's about climate action, it's about community connections, and seeing and experiencing your community in a different way, quality of life, and environmental stewardship. So you, yeah, I won't get to it, but you have this.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Welcome back, Joy, and welcome back, Jim. Glad your surgery went well.
Thanks.
Hi, everyone. Elena Thompson, thank you for the opportunity to speak on the budget items tonight. I really appreciate that you're prioritizing public safety in your strategic plan goals for this year. We're currently under assault by homeless individuals, and the down-and-out that are moving here from LA, from San Diego, from all over, and we really need to get those new deputies hired and get a foot patrol downtown, enforce our laws, and enforce our municipal code, or we're going to be another failed city like so many already in California. So I really encourage you to move that forward and look forward to next Mon, next Wednesday's Homeless Action Plan discussion and update. Already, we've had over six, 750 calls for service, so when we talk about the budget, this is really an unsustainable budget amount that our small city cannot afford to take on. So we need to really look at deterrence, and that's a whole nother subject than the budget, but, so I, I also would say that we should not be replacing the homeless service manager that just left the city. I think that what we see today is manifestation of what did not work well, so consider that in your budget planning. Number two, on the topic of infrastructure, I totally support the road budgets that you're promoting, and fixing the pipes and the storm drains, 100%. It'll be a lot less to do that now and take that big step and spend that money. So thank you for bringing that forward and taking care of our infrastructure, what you all campaigned on, that we elected you for. And then with that, I would say that mobility is so important. The Bike Walk Group has advocated for a mobility manager for a long, long time, and that will help all people in cars, bikes, or on foot move. So let's do that, including the Beach Street Trail, the La Costa Avenue Trail, and finish the streetscape, can we please? And on the topic, the final topic of economic vitality, I too want to support community character and preservation, and I always support the main streets for what they're doing, and I like what they're bringing forward for tourism. The, the uncanny element there is that we're, we've got all these homeless people in our downtown, people are fear, fearing for their lives, myself included, going to downtown less often, and so we're going to fund economic development, but yet we're enabling this whole problem to, to actually morph in our city, including with the CRC and their proposal for an expansion in our downtown. Doesn't make sense, let's make sure we get that figured out. And then on the topic of the Historic Arts District, I would just say that I think pushing the pause button is a good idea on that. That's actually a rezone for tiny homes for artists.
Thank you.
Following Sherri will be Judy Brolfine, Michael Glenn, and then Suzanne Stone.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. Sherri Yardley, CEO, Encinitas Chamber of Commerce and Visit Encinitas. First, I want to thank you for your continued support. The Encinitas Chamber of Commerce is proud to serve all five communities of Encinitas, supporting over 8,000 businesses, including those outside walkable downtowns and our many non-brick-and-mortar businesses. As outlined in the detailed letter I submitted through the portal for the 2025-2026 budget, I want to highlight just a few key points. Operating with a lean staff, we've delivered wide-ranging impacts such as maintain three public-serving websites, issued 18 social media posts weekly, published weekly e-newsletters and monthly professional development columns, delivered five major events, partnered on three more, honored 87 Rising Star students, and gave $13,000, $13,000-plus in scholarships, supported 18, I mean, sorry, supported 8,000-plus local businesses, members and non-members alike, delivered hundreds of free services, including ribbon cuttings, workshops, seminars, and business expos, networking events, and referrals. This isn't about revenue, it's a mission-driven service delivery that strengthens our entire community. With our, with your support, we will launch a small business accelerator in partnership with Mircoaster College and the SBDC, delivering hands-on support, education, and coaching tailored to local entrepreneurs, including cap-aligned sustainability workshops. Develop a comprehensive citywide business resource guide to connect businesses to permitting, licensing, workforce programs, and other vital services. Roll out a sustainability recognition program to spotlight and promote environmentally responsible businesses, supporting the city's update climate action plan. Expand our cultural programming and host a citywide business showcase to uplift every commercial district and neighborhood, including those underserved and non-main street areas. Conduct business visits beyond those currently established with the city, increasing outreach, feedback, collection, and relationships in alignment with the strategic goal 7.2C. Enhance permitting, navigation, and data reporting, aligning with the city's goal to streamline processes and better understand the businesses' climate, climate in all five communities. Act as a partner in the city's pursuit of cultural district designation, designation under AB 189 by leading business outreach and stakeholders engagement. Your investment will help us scale what we already do well, with equity, intention, and measurable impact across all of Encinitas. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for budgeting to hire additional deputies. Got to look a long way around. So once hired, I hope that we, as a community, will evaluate, what does traffic safety mean? Because we need to convey clear expectations to all residents and visitors of what we expect. For me, it means we won't tolerate running red lights, and we won't tolerate speeding. What does traffic safety mean to all of you? I hope that law enforcement, staff, and city council will engage in frank discussions and precisely define what safety means. It's a good, big word, but if we are all talking about something different, it doesn't help us. And I hope we'll figure out how we'll know if we're making progress with additional law enforcement. I hope you will answer these questions and share your responses with us, the public. Here are a few questions I have. How will we enforce our goals with more tickets? Do more tickets mean that we're making progress? Or do we actually want fewer tickets because people have learned and they're not speeding as much? It's a tricky assessment. How will we measure progress? How will we know if it's been worth our money to hire these additional deputies? Will we look every month? Will we look every six months? And how will we target the most dangerous areas? We have just put together a comprehensive safety action plan, which identifies where the most crashes and collisions are. That seems like a good place to target enforcement. We, I know on Quail Gardens Drive, they use the electronic data monitoring, speed monitoring to see that people were actually going 80 or 90 miles an hour there, and that would be a great place to target. And lastly, how will we discourage driving under the influence? Because so many of our collisions are related to that. Will we put deputies on at 10, 11, 12, 1, and 2 in the morning when a lot of these accidents, crashes are happening? So I look forward to hearing your plan on this topic. Thank you.
Dear Honorable Mayor and esteemed City Council members, great to see you again. My name is Michael Glenn, and I am the Chair of the Tourism Committee for Visit Encinitas. I am here today to ask that you continue to support your local businesses and residents through our marketing efforts. A report in the San Diego Union Tribune this past weekend states that visitor spending has already taken a downturn with the recent headlines about tariffs, border crackdowns, and an unpredictable trade war. Businesses in San Diego County that rely on visitors are seeing signs of turbulence already, in the market with cancellations, a slowdown of local bookings, and weaker than normal spring travel. The San Diego Tourism Marketing Board in particular says the combination of group cancellations, government travel restrictions, job losses, uncertainty with tariffs, extreme reductions in foreign visitors, falling consumer confidence, and general uncertainty about a whole range of economic actions are wreaking havoc on the tourism sector. We have seen substantial decline in group bookings, and the pace of all bookings has declined, and San Diego hotel occupancy was already down 6% in March compared to last year, and down nearly 5% the first week of April. As far as international travelers go, one concern is that they spend a great deal more when they're here. Visitors coming in for a quick getaway in Los Angeles, for example, only represent 23% of bookings, but 50% of overnight spending. Noticeably, in San Diego County, the sharp drop in overseas travel to the US dipped by more than 11% in March compared to a year earlier, according to the International Trade Administration. And the volume of Canadian travelers driving to the United States was down nearly 30%, March, and flying to California was down 15%, which is big considering Canadians spent $3.7 billion in California last year. Here in Encinitas, we have reports from our Tourism Advisory Board that they're already seeing the same negative impacts to their business. The potential results could be less tax revenue for infrastructure and public safety, and a loss of jobs in hospitality, retailers, restaurants, and arts and culture. I think it's best we support our residents and businesses by being proactive instead of reactive, so we don't get caught off guard. By supporting Visit Encinitas, you help our marketing initiatives to help offset the potential losses from the decline in tax revenue. But marketing to visitors isn't just about week-long vacations at the surf house, it's simpler than that. It's convincing someone to shop at Home Depot instead of Lowe's and Carlsbad, or if someone's just passing through, encouraging them to grab a cup of coffee at Coffee Coffee on their drive home. With your help, we can invest in data analytics to see where people are coming from, where in particular they're stopping in Encinitas, how long they're staying, what they're spending, so we can maximize that tax revenue for infrastructure projects and public safety. What Visit Encinitas is trying to do is play the long game so we have consistent tax revenue for our residents and keep our businesses open. I hope you consider our ask of $65,000, not $150,000, as the media inaccurately reported. Thank you for your time.
Following Suzanne will be Ron Medak, Scott Campbell, and then Brad Roth.
Hi, Suzanne Stone. Thank you for the time. I'll be brief. The first thing I was going to say was pretty much exactly what Judy Brolfine said, which is, you know, I support the addition of additional deputies if needed. I was able to attend Councilmember O'Hara's business meeting with business owners downtown, and it was really interesting to hear that crime, safety downtown is really important to those business owners. It's impacting their business, it's impacting the safety of their employees. And so if by adding these additional deputies, we can improve that and also improve traffic safety, I'm all for it. At the same time, we need to measure and make sure that we are going to get the return on the investment that we're making in those deputies. We want accountability across the board. And there have been a couple of incidents recently that have caused me a little bit to question the way that our resources are being deployed, several incidents where the law enforcement response seemed completely out of whack with the event. Just last night, we had 11 deputies show up at Moonlight Beach and a helicopter to apprehend a single suspect. A few weeks ago, we had six deputies show up to not apprehend anybody, it was a traffic stop that ended up with no arrest, no citation. So let's make sure that we're deploying our resources appropriately and getting the outcomes that we desire. I have to disagree with the previous speaker about not continuing to invest in the infrastructure the city needs in order to make sure we are compassionately connecting people who are experiencing homelessness with care. I know that you have all talked about the by-name list and participating in the by-name list with the Regional Task Force on Homelessness. In order to do that, we need staff, and we need people to make that happen. I think that's an extremely important part of keeping the priority from the mayor's state of the city of, you know, reducing homelessness in Encinitas, enforcing the law, all for that. But we also need to be compassionate, and we need to connect people with services, and there's a gap right now. And because of that gap, people are ending up back on our streets, impacting our businesses and our community. So I look forward to hearing, as Judy does, about your plans to evaluate the effectiveness of our increased deputies, and I look forward to discussing more this about the Homeless Action Plan update next, next council meeting. Thanks for your time.
Mayor Els, distinguished council members, and I'm glad to see you back. Jim, wonderful to see you here today already, it's terrific. My name is Ron Medak, I'm resident of Leavenhein, 18 years, and I'm a board member of Leavenhein Fire Safe Council. So there was, I just wanted to make one statement first, and I wanted to speak to one item. And I just really wanted to congratulate this council. I remember being at a victory celebration last November, and the statement was made by several winning candidates that we were going to have a public forum in our city hall. And you've accomplishing that, you're making a big difference, and I really want to tip my hat, congratulations to all of you for that. So I wanted to speak to number SS, which is the Leavenhein Temporary Fire Station. The $400,000 for design and permits, it's number 16 in the 2024 ITF ranking. I want to remind you, it was originally in the top six. Somehow it got down to 11, or rather, to 16. But it is number one on Chief Gordon's priorities. And I just want to remind everybody, I was over, I was here over a year ago when I first discovered that Fire Station 6 in Leavenhein was a faux fire station, it really wasn't a fire station at all. And I felt compelled to come to city council and bring that to people's attention. And as I was giving my little talk, which was the first time I ever spoken here, I was really surprised to see Mayor Krantz looking at me really intently, and thought, gee, this guy's really paying attention. Maybe something will happen. And the next week, he proposed actually $50,000 to identify a site for that fire station, which was terrific, and it shows that this is very much a bipartisan item. It's number one on a terrific report, the entire Leavenhein Fire Safe Council Board is very impressed with Chief's proposals and report, it was really first-class. So I just want to say the Palisade Fire has told us all that, well, Leavenhein might be the point of the spear. If winds come from the east, we get a big fire, but the whole city is at risk. If we stop it out there, it's to everybody's benefit. Thank you very much.
All right. Good afternoon, council. I'm Scott Campbell with Encinitas.
I'm Scott Campbell with Encinitas His and Review Panel, and we have some different perspective on some of this stuff. First off, I think our whole group of 190 people supports funding of L7. I believe that's true. We also support roads, drains, and bridges over everything. Let's go to the next page. Quick thing, just some perspective. Previous mayors set us up with $5.5 million in debt every year, and we don't get out of this for another five or six years. Next page. Okay, so I've heard some of our businesspeople, we got compared to other beach cities, Oceanside and Danah Point, and that interested me, and I wanted to see what are we actually comparing? You can't compare apples to bricks. They're not even the same category. We don't have a harbor. We don't have huge hotels. We have a small number of hotels. We don't really even have destination features. People come here from somewhere else, and they get in their car, and they drive around. So maybe we should apply VMT to some of these businesses. We still apply it to all housing. Businesses maybe are generating more VMT than some of these houses. The TOT is particularly interesting. It's such a small amount of our budget. Let's focus on residents that pay the majority of our budget and the property taxes. What do residents want? They want roads, drains, and bridges. Now, we heard about preserving character, and that's a great thing. Tourism does not preserve our character. In fact, it sells our character out. We just heard about the downtown. I talked to some business owners this week, and they say that residents don't go there. So who is benefiting from some of this stuff? If we're going to spend money at Chamber of Commerce, it needs to come back and benefit the residents and not tourists. I have a couple more slides here. Thank you. It was just brought up that we need to collect data on our businesses, and I do appreciate that, and I want more of that. We do some things with this one company, it's not on here. I wish we had more, break it down better, and in more categories. Who are these people that are spending money? Where are they living? But out of the top, out of those 8,000 businesses, 25 are bringing in 39% of our sales tax. So that 8,000 really is just a number. A lot of those are a postcode at a mailbox. There is no brick and mortar. There's nothing. They made out of just one person. Oh, eight seconds. Okay, they all went dark. Okay, thank you for your time.
Brad Roth, representing the Cottonwood Creek Conservancy. In a discussion, oh, wait a minute, I forgot my glasses.
Got to have the glasses.
Got to have. Mayor Ayers and Mark Wysniewski, one of our board members, talked recently, and this project came out of their discussion that we're requesting $25,000 for interpretive signage at Moonlight Beach State Park. And it would have a lot of, a number of benefits, fits in with the idea of the historic district that was mentioned earlier. Cottonwood Creek is the single most important factor in the creation of our little town of Encinitas in 1881. It supplied water for the California Southern Railroad steam locomotive, is also a major source of water for early settlers. And this site was named a point of historical interest by the State of California. That was initiated by Conservancy founder and local historian Idalou Coley. And in 2013, we had a plaque installed at the Overlook on Coast Highway. This first photo you see is taken in 1991 before our great arundo removal project. Most of the vegetation you see there is arundo donax. It's a reed. It looks very much like bamboo, and it invades many waterways in California and other areas of the country. And in one day, we removed 160,000 stems of this cane, and with 130 volunteers, four chippers, including one provided by the city of Escondido, followed up for 30 years by monthly volunteer work parties performing invasive plant removals and restoration plantings. I'm running out of time here. So that's an after photo there. And then the next picture illustrates a biologist who comes here every year and surveys birds and has found an increase in the bird population.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes speakers.
Okay. With that, we'll move into deliberation, and Deputy Mayor Lines.
Sure. I'd like to move things right along. And Brad, I always appreciate your insights on the open spaces in our community that are also historic and relevant. And Cottonwood Creek is just the heart of it for us. Thank you. I do want to note, though, that the Historical Society does have a historic plaque program that they started a few years ago, and Carolyn Cope, of course, would be the person to talk to, as another avenue for funding for historic signage. I think you might benefit from that. I do have a question for City Manager. I'm hearing public say that there may be some gaps as far as our homeless action plan and what we're trying, what we will be, what we need to achieve this next year. Now, I know that's going to be on our next agenda, so the timing is interesting. Since the agenda was posted just earlier today, I did take a quick look at the presentation, and I can right away see that there are some gaps. So we don't necessarily have it here to discuss today, but what are our mechanisms for addressing gaps between our homeless action plan and our available funds for this next fiscal year? How do we bring some funds to that if we identify that there's some things needed?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Lines. So within the operating budget, we did not look at enhancing or putting any more money towards the homeless action plan. We have various grants. We already have funding for the BCNC. We still do have one vacancy for the Homeless Solutions Coordinator. We obviously took the other one and turned that into a deputy fire marshal. So we are looking at working with several of our partners. That is addressed in HAP. So we talk about working with Interfaith and County and some of the other things where they service us. We don't have to pay for those things. So we will be looking for ways to partner. We did not identify any additional funding that came from the Development Services Department that was necessary for the homeless action plan. Tonight, what you have in front of you is there is going to be an unassigned fund balance that we're looking for $500,000. That is a fund balance that can be used for anything general fund if anything comes up. Also, too, as we come to the end of our fiscal year, which is June 30, 2025, we'll go into budget year-end, and then, of course, we always bring back funding mid-year. But we did not identify adding any additional money through any of the budget requests that our departments had.
And just to follow up on that, we've talked about there's some FEMA, we have a request for FEMA reimbursement. When that comes in, does that go into the general fund, and that becomes money that's available?
Yes, that would. That would go into our unassigned general fund balance, yes.
And that is?
And that could be $2.6 million with the FEMA reimbursement if we do get that. I believe it's 2.6. Director Gallup, I can't remember if it's 2.3 or 2.6. Here comes Director Bankston.
Yes, 2.6 is our request.
All right. Yeah.
I think we gave an update, excuse me, just an update on what the status was. It was through most of its approval, but obviously, anything coming from the federal government right now could be subject to change. But can you give just a quick status?
Yeah, we were working our way through the evaluation process pretty well, and then the Palisades fire happened, so some of the FEMA folks that were working on our request have been reallocated to Palisades. So we're just kind of in a holding pattern, waiting to hear more information.
Thank you.
Okay. And that was one thing I was going to bring up. I did want to note that the donut chart is not in priority order. It is more in funding current, just kind of as they get added on the bottom, and then the funding, as they get fully funded, they go to the top. So don't confuse A, A, B, B, C, C as meaning they are in priority order. One of the things that several of the projects on here, such as Trail 82, La Costa Ped Path, are great candidates for future grants, so I'm sure as one of our, and the other item on the website is our objectives, our written objectives for the city. And one of the objectives is to revamp how we go after grants and broaden our ability to go after grants. So when I go back to the donut chart, there are several projects on here that have been designed and are ready for grants, making them better as grant candidates because they are shovel-ready, Trail 82 being one of them, La Costa Ped Path. And then one of the items we have on here is the potential to get Vulcan Ped Path Light, I'll call it, through design, and therefore get it to a point where it might qualify for grants, or more likely qualify for grants. So that's part of the funding consideration here. So you've got a pot of money potentially coming, likely coming, and 2.6 million that's not reflected in this spreadsheet. We've got grants that are not reflected in this spreadsheet that we will certainly be going for. I think Councilmember Schaefer talked about what we do on Santa Fe East and whether we think we're going to move forward in the next 12 months. We could consider up to 1.7 million of general funds sitting there. So we have some options. And that's one reason I'm willing this year to go from our typical $2 million unassigned general fund balance, which we would normally carry at the beginning of the budget cycle, down to $500,000. I think that's a reasonable position to be in, given what we expect to come in and what flexibility we have in general funds and other projects. You know, hopefully, we don't have to dip into it, but if we do, it's there. So I don't know if anybody else wanted to speak. I just wanted to do some opening remarks. Any other? Otherwise, I'll propose, there we go, Councilmember Schaefer.
Just look, are we going to go to the calculator at this point? What's the?
Yeah. I would say let's go to the calculator, and we'll just, do you want to go top-down? And probably being, and just do kind of like what we did last time. Tom, has that worked for you, that we just see where we got three? We did it pretty quickly last time. I thought it worked out well.
Yeah, that approach would work for us, yes.
Okay. And I'm sure as we get to each item, so starting out with the CalPERS, I would recommend funding it. Anybody else?
Yes.
Second, third.
I see nods and yeses. Yeah, I think.
So it's just a matter of saying yes or no, is what I'm getting?
No, you can, yeah, we're just, and it'll be a little more free-form right now, so we don't get too formal here.
Yes, that's where I stand right now, yeah, funding at $250,000.
Okay. So moving on to the second item, the unfunded target balance, I think we can, my recommendation right now, until we get to the bottom of the list, leave it at $500,000 for now, and see if we can make it through this and still have the $500,000, you know?
I'd like to add to it, so I'll start there for sure. I'd like to add to it.
Okay.
I'll start there with $500,000.
Marco, any?
Nope.
You're good? Okay. Moving on to three, additional law enforcement. And I'm going to take an opportunity to address some of Judy's questions. I agree with you very much, Judy, on the questions that we need to make sure this is really doing something. But I think what I've personally seen is people running, unfortunately, running stop signs, as we just saw tragically, but I see it on a regular basis all over the city. And we need enough patrol that both residents and visitors understand that if you run a stoplight, you'll get a ticket. Likewise, we installed, we lowered our speed limit. We need to enforce the lower speed limits to really get safety. So I'm 100% behind this, is getting additional. I went back and looked at the financial report for the city called the ACFER, and I went back, I think, 10 or 15 years, and we have not added a traffic enforcement deputy in that whole time. It's been flat the whole time. The only deputy we added was last year, and it was the HOPE, the second HOPE deputy. So we've been prudent almost to a fault, and I think it's time that with the added traffic, we increase our enforcement. And you might ask why one or why two? Two will give us multiple shift coverage. And if you do one, it'll be such a drop in the bucket, it'll hardly even be noticed. I think we need the two, so we can cover two shifts more than five days a week and have sufficient coverage, so.
Yeah, and I'll piggyback on that. I think it's, you know, safety and security, I've said this multiple times before, is the number-one responsibility of a government. And with the projected homes coming and all the developments that are obviously been approved, it's a requirement to get in front of it instead of waiting for the problem to happen. And I have the utmost trust in both our safety and security personnel, meaning the chief and the deputy that, or sorry, the sheriff that's in charge of these things. So I'm 100% on board with.
And one thing I might add is this does not add a full-time headcount. This is a contract increase, so this does not add to our CalPERS issues or anything like that.
Correct.
Moving on, and did I have any other comments?
Can I add in, and I'm going to look at Captain Watson in the back of the room, but it's my understanding that this would be a DUI detail without, if you could respond to that. It hasn't been said that way by the presentation yet, but maybe I could get a little clarification on that. I would appreciate it. Thank you for walking up.
Yeah, so the thoughts would be that, yes, some of that, one of those units, maybe two, but that'll be a discussion as with the city, but that we could put those resources to be proactive in our DUI enforcement.
Thank you. One of the things I didn't realize is how time-consuming DUI stops are, and I think additional resources are required in order to get better at that, so I do fully support it.
Yeah. And the City Manager reminded me that this is actually the startup cost because we don't have to buy cars for them, and these are full deputies in cars. So next year, the following year, the cost will actually drop per year.
Yes, that's correct.
And then one of the things I think I've talked about, certainly on the campaign trail but before, was the question came up about how do we do focused enforcement? And, you know, this allows us to rotate enforcement. You have the flexibility to move between DUI and traffic potentially, so this is really just a funding issue today, but it'll give you operational flexibility. One of the things we used to do at least a decade ago is we had the Traffic Commission be kind of the collection point where people could come and register complaints and register comments, and then they would actually give a list to the sheriff of focused enforcement points. And I'd like to, it's a policy issue, but I'd like to reinstate that at some time, but that kind of answers the question. How do we, how do we keep the pulse on the people giving feedback? Because I'll always maintain that the people in the neighborhoods are the best planners and the best eyes and ears out there. They'll know where people are speeding and blowing through stop signs the most, so.
Yeah, correct. I couldn't agree more with that.
Any other comments on sheriffs? So I think that's a yes for two. I feel like I should be using the gavel, going, 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 gone, no? So moving on to, I think, number four is not coming out of general fund, so any objections to that? to that? Okay?
No, in fact, I'd like to see us look to push that with the Army Marine, Army Corps, to improve that footprint farther north, so I think this is a great investment.
Excellent. And then that's number five, drainage consultant, which?
If I could jump in on that one, I think after evaluating the other items on this list, I think that that is redundant. We're getting our drainage design and consulting services done through other items, and to reserve $50,000 for additional drainage consulting does seem, in an arena where we have limited funds, does seem to be a little bit too far of a reach. If we end up needing additional drainage consulting, I would be happy to consider it as we go through the year, but that's where I stand, and so I'm not supportive.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, I'm in contrary to that, I think that it's, obviously, we're behind, we've been behind, and it's time to catch up, and again, I trust the professionals that are there, and if that's what they need, I'd want to budget it now, as we have, again, there's a 1.7 that I'm, that's the part that I'm looking to take from, as I do not believe that we'll be getting to Santa Fe East anytime soon, so I don't want to limit our ability. And then I think, I've talked with the mayor about this specifically, that the timing of our contracts, if you want to explain that, the timing of our contracts, just getting settled with our pavement and with our drainage. With the extra fund right now, it's the perfect kind of beneficial storm.
Yeah, well, I'll let Councilmember O'Hara go next, he's got next up, and then I'll remind him and I'll address, and I'll actually call on staff to help us with understanding phasing of funding.
Echoing a lot of the comments that Councilmember Schaefer is making, the timing is actually pretty good.
So what I'd like to, the purpose of this, and we actually, the previous council allocated 50,000 last year, which we raised to 75, I think because we had the money in the fund, but the council actually allocated 50, and this is in particular for Q3 consulting that did our, I like to call it the Lucadia Flooding Master Plan, the Q3 Report in 2022, and the purpose of this is to have the original designer come back, and anytime we make changes to the hydrology, because Michael Baker, the consultant and designer for Streetscape, will do changes, and there have been suggestions by the previous council to punch through pipes underneath the railroad tracks, which was not on the original Q3 reporting, so I think it's a Q3 report. So it's very important that the original blueprint be understood, because the original blueprint is very clear that it will satisfy a 100-year storm in Lucadia, and that is the gold standard, that is the standard everybody wants to get to. I have personally asked Tom Ryan, the hydrologist engineer from Q3, so many times, here in council and over the phone, will you meet the 100-year storm with this design? Yes, and I think, I think five times, it's almost gotten monotonous, so as far as the timing of the funding, this is a relatively small number, as we come back with new projects or new questions or changes proposed, and I know we've been using him on a consulting basis, we would, we need him when we need him, I want to have him on call, and I've found he's a straight shooter, he's analyzed it all and knows it. So as far as timing, I think you're right in that, let's take, I think we have a line item on here for 500,000 for Vulcan South. I think Tom and I certainly agree that that is the next phase. If we get the Vulcan South pipe designed, then we could possibly go for grants again. We don't have the full funding, even though I'd like to. I want to talk a little bit about the long-term funding and timing, so 500,000 to design right away this year, wait and see what happens. I would love to get 5 million a year for 10 years, because that's what it's going to take to solve Lucadia flooding. Just a comparison, we've spent about 50 million on Streetscape so far, not the flooding portion, just Streetscape. And so the question is, and when we get to the next phase of Streetscape, Segment B, it's hard to differentiate between these, but you're going to have, we have to do the stuff below ground at a minimum first, and probably simultaneously, so we need to make progress on this if we're ever going to solve. Now, I want to go back to why Vulcan South, because it's a nice $5 million chunk that could be funded, possibly through grants, if we get it designed, be ready for grants, and if we do that, we offload a huge watershed that is getting piped north, north, where naturally, it would head more south to Moonlight. We're piping it all the way through the 24-inch pipe, and we're filling it, and that reduces its capability to drain out Lucadia Park and other places. So it'd be a huge improvement, it would eliminate two pumps, one to two pumps, out of our current mitigation plan, and that's operational cost. So we started saving money right away with this, so it's a manageable chunk. I know I'm kind of going ahead on topic, but, so I think we need this person, and I support the 60,000. Well, it's 60 loaded, so.
I support.
Support.
Oh, I thought, Marco, did you have your?
Oh, no, I was going to, I support it as well.
Deputy Mayor Lyons?
Right, I already registered that I'm not in support, because I still, even after what's been said, I believe it is redundant. This is a field I practice in professionally, so I understand drainage consultant work. But I do want to kind of shine a light then on, if we're talking about a trade-off between future Vulcan South storm drain and Santa Fe Road, which I didn't realize was on our agenda here to talk about today, but sounds like, sounds like my colleagues might be proposing that, I do want to correct the record, that the Streetscape does include drainage improvements. We have been investing in drainage improvements. Now, of course, I know that we need a lot more everywhere, but let's not, let's not go the wrong direction on trading that off against safety improvements along Santa Fe Drive, because safety improvements, especially associated with our children and our students, are still very important, and I know drainage improvements are too. That's why we're here, we're here to daylight all this. But the safety improvements for the Santa Fe East are imperative for that whole corridor to be safe. There's, if we don't move forward with that East project, then we are creating a gap, and there's not the continuity that the students and the children would be safe in. And I've seen our city do this in the past, and I don't want it to happen again. We move forward, we get consensus, we're doing good things, and then we change directions. So we're, I hope that we can stick to continuing to provide for safety for the community on Santa Fe Drive, and if we're going to pull some funding from that, I hope it gets a public meeting, because I don't think that's what we're here to do today. So I'm still in support of the Santa Fe project, I don't see that as available money, I see that we have to use it within a year, and if we don't, we're going to have to pay a lot of money back, so just want to be clear about that.
And Councilmember O'Hara?
So I'm a big believer in budgeting what we're looking at. I don't think Santa Fe is on the, is on this spreadsheet that's here in front of me. Correct me if I'm wrong, the money we're looking at is the money available to the general fund. Santa Fe has not been looked at by the residents and the council, that is on May 13th, I believe. At that time, we'll start to overview things. Currently, the money we're looking at is the money in front of us, so I wouldn't pretend to know how much money will or won't be left as far as Santa Fe goes. As far as supporting the project, I think there's a lot of feedback already that says there's going to be a lot of necessary changes, but I don't know what any of those changes look like. So for now, I propose we stay away from the subject of talking about money that we don't have on this, on the spreadsheet in front of us, just across the board.
I think within limit, but like, let's take the FEMA money, that we have a pretty good idea is going to come. Now, obviously, we can't commit it tonight, but we could certainly defer things and consider it when it does come, that that would be, you know, we're not committing it tonight, but we would say, hey, I'm not committing it tonight, but that doesn't mean I'm saying no forever, or for the year. It could be somewhere in the next three, six months, we get an injection of 2.6 million in general funds from this FEMA reimbursement.
And we could get a reimbursement of a dollar, so let's not plan anything beyond what we have in front of us on this sheet right here, with the idea of like, let's augment this as opportunity provides going forward.
Yeah, I'm just saying that we're going to have to take something off this list, some things off this list, yeah. So, okay, so.
Just to piggyback on that as well, is there's no, the things that we're going to have to take off don't add up. You can't take off a couple hundred thousand, a couple hundred thousand, and make up for $800,000 for swamis, a million dollars for pavement, that's necessary, drainage, million dollars, a couple hundred thousand here and there does not add up to the millions of dollars that we need, so those items. And so I'm going back to the Santa Fe East, like you said earlier, it's not going to be there, I don't see us getting to Santa Fe East in the next calendar year, or the fiscal year, with all of the requirements of Santa Fe West still. And the inspections and stuff that's already coming back before, we have, again, we'll hear this next week, but it's looking very likely that that, and yes, the 680,000 does need to be dedicated to Santa Fe East, and I'm not saying that we take all of the 1.729, but a portion of that, as we mentioned, that there's other portions, not just the FEMA money, but there's other, there's mid-year budget, this year we are over, we had other allocations that came back less or better, and we had more money, so I think it's prudent to get these projects and pull and have that conversation about Santa Fe East, at least a portion of that 1.7, so that we could fund a lion's share of what was in front of us in these top 35 items. So that, to me, is right here, right now, and it's safety, it's all the things we've talked about, it could get to some of the nice-to-haves that we've kind of come across in historic districts and whatnot, but the fact that matters, we still have the unassigned, that half a million, so there's other things that we could, down the road, that come up, but I do think that it's very important to not look over the 1.7 and just make a decision without thinking about that.
Maybe I can make a compromise proposal, just conceptually, not a vote or anything. The 2.6 for the FEMA, that is stormwater damage that is getting reimbursed, and we spent 3.7, we got back 2.6, so we actually, emergency, for that one year, two years ago, we had to spend the 1.1 difference, right? So we actually, that came out of the unassigned budget. I would propose that, for the, you know, I proposed a million for the drainage, maybe it may be a compromise, is to leave that 1.7 there for now, but defer 500,000 of the million I'm proposing for the drainage until we get the FEMA. If, if and when, which I think is high probability we'll get it, that, and no commitment tonight, but what I would propose at that time is half of that go into lining, at least half, go into lining and make up for the additional. So right now, on storm drain repair and storm drain lining, proposed here is 0.25 for maintenance on storm drains, and 1 million for relining, where it's all just going to relining. What I would propose is maybe dropping the 1 million down to half a million, with the thought that sometime between now and probably mid-year, we will have another 1.3 to dump into that, and that kind of, I think, answers one of the concerns I heard last time, is hey, you're going to have to start up, there are going to have to be contracts formed, and what I'm looking for ultimately is a strategic plan, and we're not funding the strategic plan, but that 1.3 that goes in there could fund the rest of the million I'm talking about, plus the strategic plan for the following year, and then we could keep this going. My goal is to get it going for five years straight, a million dollars a year, and according to our staff, that should get most of our pipes lined within a reasonable time. We're going to lose a few between now and then, but, you know, we need to make some serious progress in a handful of years, and so, so that's a compromise proposal that keeps the 1.7 where it is. I'm not sold that 1.7 belongs there completely, I'm, a lot to me depends on what happens with Santa Fe West.
Correct, and so I'll, my calculator already has us at a half a million for the pipe, if we wanted, that's where I am anyway, so that's what's going to give in my current calculations, and I have $18,000 left over, so.
Okay.
I'm 100% on board with that, if that's, if you're okay with that, but I do think it's prudent to at least leave the 1.7 there as a talkable point, if and when necessary in this conversation.
Totally.
Thank you.
I'm definitely on board with that, 500,000 for the pipelining.
With the potential to consider more later.
I mean, I just saw it populated in here, so, but I'd be on board with that.
Maybe we could jump to that item.
No, you can come back to it, it's coming up.
Okay, so the next item is number? Oh, was, did I back up? Yeah, number six, yeah. So this is the chamber, and this is one that I would defer, because I still have questions about the budget and what percentage of their budget we're making up, and I think this one and the next one, six and seven, I would defer till mid-year, and I think the same kind of argument, we could end up with quite a bit more money by then, will be, will also be, will know more, and I think there's still quite a bit of, I still have questions about what percentage are we of the chamber's budget right now? That wasn't in the support package, that's the question I did ask last time. I also, I'm looking for my notes here, there we go. The, I'm also careful with what the chamber is and what the chamber is not. The chamber is a trade association, it represents the members of the NC News Chamber, and we have a problem in that we also have the 101 associations, which are also similar associations, although they have the added historic preservation goal in all their charters. And so, you know, and I know, I know you're doing a great service, I'm interested in doing it, I just don't have enough information yet to move this forward tonight, and that's where I am right now, so.
I'd like to jump in if I could, Mayor?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so I hear what you're saying, I'm aligned with it a little bit, and I want to, I want to say that I think one of the things that might be good is for the chamber to work with our staff and with the 101s together in their memorandum of agreement or understanding each year to define what the upcoming needs are. For example, this year, we may have some, and you profiled this in your presentations today, we may have some economy-driven issues that our businesses have, or maybe we still have some development services getting permits issues that our businesses are having, where we're not quite there yet. And I would like that the chamber and the 101s and the city work together through our economic development lead, Roy Sapow, to make sure we're aligned, so that the chamber is not shouldering all of the burden, because I think, because you are overarching, you're overarching for the whole city, you come to this with, we'll help solve these problems, but I think actually, some of it the city may be able to do through our memorandum of agreement with you, and the other 101s may be able to do. So I want to throw that out there as kind of a structural way to move forward as we talk to you, but I also did put $40,000 in here to honor this request, and it was the same amount that was requested last year, so I'm not, I'm not going to be in the same place as you are, Mayor, on this, but I would like to show 40,000 as far as what I would like to include in our budget for the chamber.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, and I was a little confused on this, I'm confirming that this is a one-time above the 40,000?
So if I may, so what we do is, we will be bringing them, and I'm looking at Deputy City Manager Sapow, we will be bringing the agreements in June, correct? Okay, so we already have, in the current operating budget, if Roy, you could speak to that, we already have a certain amount for the 101s and the chamber that will be coming to you in our normal O and M.
So this is above and beyond?
This is above and beyond, so if Roy could talk to that real quick.
And is it every year, or is it just one time?
It's a one time.
So right now, we're currently budgeting $40,000 a year for each of the organizations, so, and that's an annual basis. Anything additional to that would be through the budgeting process, and that, I'm assuming that is why they're here.
So I had allocated 30K to each of those, to the six and seven, that's what I had in the calculator.
And you understand that that's 30 plus the 40 that they're already getting, okay?
And I, you know, disclosure, I've met with them, and I, again, I do think that there's some. some, I think there's people worried that we're gonna overdo or underdo, whatever, it's not, it's really in support of the businesses, and they do a pretty significant job. Again, Oktoberfest would probably be, you know, a glaring image of what they do, that's not here, front and center on, it's really the one major event besides the Elevenhain.
Year and Broughts.
Yeah, their Halloween, that they do, yeah, it's, there's a couple of things that happen out east that aren't, but everything's usually front and center down here on 101, so I think enhancing that knowledge and, again, getting at this now, and then at the mid-year budget, if there's more for, from, that comes from that, that there's a, an update with the numbers that would allow us to say, okay, keep going, because it's in alignment with where we are, and there's other things in the works, but I think that would be appropriate for actually going over and seeing how lean they run and how much they do for the city in a very, very powerful way with very little, so I'm appreciative of that, and 30K to each of those, I think.
So you're roughly, roughly half the request.
Correct. At half a year, we could do more.
Other council? Any, any comments?
I mean, you wanna go, Jim? Okay, I think I, I have a lot of other things down here towards the bottom that I really want to, I really want that money to go to, not, again, I know that the chamber does a lot, I know that, I've spoken with them and had great meetings, I've been to, I am not, I don't think that they're not doing a great job, they're doing a wonderful job. I've been to some business, business, business meet and greets, and I do, I did allocate some money, I just, I think for me, I could be, is it possible that we just move on and then come back to that one? Just because I feel like these other ones are so important to me, the infrastructure stuff, the fire station, like, I think there's other stuff that I, for me, I would love to allocate money to that without, I guess, I don't want my money to go someplace where it's, right now, that I feel the infrastructure is very important.
I think we certainly are gonna be coming back, going iterating, sorry, iterating around. Maybe give us your first best, your, what you, where you think, you know, if it's less or more, or?
No, I got this.
And then we'll hear from Jim, too.
I got what they've got funded last year, 40, is it 40,000?
Yeah, so, and that's not showing here at all, that's already baked in, the 40,000. This is the additional, so are you saying zero and zero right now?
I mean.
I mean, in essence, that's what I'm saying, but deferring it to mid-year.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't know that we're that far off. And anything else, Marco?
No.
Jim?
I would refer to City Attorney first before I comment on this subject, my business as a member of the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Hara. Without knowing the full details, my advice would be for you to accuse yourself from this item.
Okay, so I'll accuse myself from this item.
Okay. So with that, I think we have 30, 30, 40, 0, 0, 0, and 0, 0 for now. Let's leave it at that and move on, and then we will come back to this undoubtedly. Okay, so number seven, chamber, or sorry, number eight, small, small print.
Yes.
Need better glasses.
How could I?
I support this in full, 180,000, $96,000 total. Permit parking is something that's going to get hot and heavy in the next year in NCS and beyond. I think the staff is in a tremendous job of estimating cost of software and listening to our requests, so I 100% support the full amount on line eight.
I will also support, I had a question for staff, is this a one-time fee, or is there a one-time 80, and then the rest is the operating fees 30 over the next years, or what is the?
Yeah, so it depends on, so this, this figure incorporates a consultant or the contractor who would review our permit applications and then do some enforcement, so this includes some enforcement hours, so that number could be variable, flexible. There are startup costs, which is the purchase of the software, but there are annual license fees, so depending on how much enforcement time we would want to give to the contractor, that would result in a different number, but moving forward, probably 40K each year after.
Got it, thank you. So I'm in agreement with fully funded.
And Councilmember Lion, or Deputy Mayor Lyons, sorry.
Yes, thank you. Some of this may be because I've missed an important permit parking dialogue, but I do know that this comes out of the Public Health and Safety Commission, and I see it as it's would-like but not urgent. I don't see the urgent, the urgency of additional permit parking in our community, so I will kick this, I will want to put zero here and kick this one down the road to another time in the future.
Just to update you, the urgency was that with all of developments coming under Measure U, that we only have four zones right now, but there's a very significant amount of parking issues that are already playing out in the few that have been developed, so that's the, just the background real quick.
And Councilmember San Antonio.
Clearly, we saw from Zone D on the Via Streets, that was a big problem, and I feel like with what I've heard over at Fox Point and Quell, on Quell Gardens Road, I feel like with that 268 car, or parking space deficit, I feel like that's gonna be a big issue, so I feel like this parking situation is only gonna get worse, and it's only gonna grow. Unfortunately, we'll probably have to have a lot more zones, and parking enforcement is gonna be an even bigger issue here in Encinitas, making our small town even, you know, seem like an even bigger town, so I'm definitely fully, I want to fully fund this as well.
And then I'll hop into, I think, yeah, there was quite a bit of discussion that night, and I think it was an eye-opener, and I thought the most crucial distinction was the amount of labor being spent by our traffic engineering, so we're using traffic engineers as clerks to manually issue parking permits and track and paper things. This software will automate that, and we're doing enforcement, actually, with deputies, and this would allow us to give tools to, like ACE Parking, and for a fraction of the deputy cost, and so to me, this is a force multiplier and a, for the existing zones we have today, so it actually, I think, is a savings in the end, operationally, it'll be a wash, that 40,000 a year will be a wash. You know, if you listen to Abe talking about the amount of FTE he's having to spend, it was significant of engineers, and that's what we want to get out of, so, and this is just a better way, we'll get statistics out of it, we'll get everything we need.
And Mayor, if I may, one of the other things, too, is that we are looking to bring the permit parking ordinance back, we're gonna do that after summer, and part of it was, is that if council decides to put further stipulations on some of the permits, we talked about going from 30 days to like 15 days, that means permits will have to be renewed more often and things like that, which means we're already spending an exorbitant amount of time, staff time, so again, with this new permit parking software, it would definitely allow council to have the option to really have a robust permit parking program, and that software would automatically do that, and we could update it often.
Yeah, and the part I liked a lot about it was that the ease at enforcement of drive-by, drive-by enforcement, instead of having to have somebody walk down and look and check, there's basically monitor, so that there's a license plate that's associated with that permit, and it's, it's pretty lickety-split, and again, with the, all of the out-of-town pass-through traffic that comes from east to west, especially during the summer, it just couldn't say that I think this will pay for itself pretty, pretty quickly.
Yeah, so I think we include that at four, four to one vote.
Yep.
Moving on to the vegetation management contract, increase the public works budget.
Can I jump in on this one?
Yep.
I'm unclear how this is different than what we normally, than what we already do, so I'd like to fund it only to $10,000. I understand that this came out of the Public Health and Safety Commission as well. We are, this is only associated with public property, correct, Chief Gordon?
Correct, with the contract we have now, it would be increasing that contract so that we can go further in and then higher as well.
When you say further in, you mean beyond our brush management standards?
Well, so we've started off with five feet, went out to 10 feet, 15, and our goal is 20 feet, and then also to have any canopy taken care of, especially during, with the evacuation routes, and so that would help us get to those standards. Right now, we're not to the CAL FIRE standard of the evacuation routes that we want, and that will help us get there.
Oh, okay, thanks for the clarification. I'll stand down.
Okay, and anybody else?
Fully fund.
Hop in there?
Vote to fully fund.
Okay, I gotta, I'm a yes, too, by the way, I fully support this, I look at Ranches Santa Fe Road as the, and LoJack as the poster child for evacuation route brush management, and the progress that you've made on the current budget is great, but you can tell it needs to go back further, there are sections where trees are overhanging completely, in fact, I had the pleasure of doing a ride-along with, with the chief, and we noted, much better, much better, that's, that's encroaching a little, and so we want to have that evacuation route open, and open even in a major fire conflagration, so.
Fully fund as well.
Okay, and Jim?
I'll fund, fully fund.
Okay, and any other comment?
No, additional comment.
In point of work, we have 22 minutes, 21 minutes left in this meeting, is there any way to just kind of get through the items and anything that's, we can just mark off that there's discussion and come back to those, because it would help us not go over them?
Okay.
Just to get through, because we're only at item 10, and we have 35, so just to get the yeses or anything that we all agree on, anything we don't, then we can come back to that.
We can kind of lump the next, at least two together, the citywide evacuation and printed educational material for 30, 33,000?
Fully.
Anybody object to that?
I find fully.
Okay, any objections?
I'll go with the majority on that.
Okay, urban forester or biologist, and again, I think this is for the, per the fire, but it augments something we're already doing.
Correct.
Any objections?
Fully fund.
Fully fund.
Okay, we don't need to do anything on 12, or?
14.
13, I'm sorry, 13. 14, ADA curve is required, so that's a done deal. Beach there access at Swamis.
Fully fund.
Fully fund.
Fully fund, anybody else?
Fully fund, I'd like to do 29, just in congruence with it, down to 600,000 to get half of that money.
Oh, is that how you're balancing, we can cover that one?
Correct, yeah, we'll just cover it then.
Okay, let's see, now we're on to Beach Street?
I'd like to recommend that we take money also from the trail development fees that our city manager clarified for us earlier, to go towards this, so that the request would be slightly less than.
It'd be now 76, because she had 24, so it's 76.
Great, thank you for that.
Correct.
Okay?
And can I, can I ask what this is? Is this construction, too? This is?
No, so this is, this is a public safety issue. I support WMA Lines on this with 24 and 76. So Beach Street Open Space Public Recreational Trail is a trail behind the Beach Street neighborhood that currently has become a nuisance, safety nuisance, due to presence of homelessness and activity down there, and we went out there with the neighborhood, sheriff's department, city manager, city staff, and residents to, to talk about what we could do to make that a safer and more accessible area to the city, with the inclusion of connecting the two trails in a way that we could make it an art space, a walkable space, and essentially a harder place to hide, for lack of a better way to put it, in that way, making it more enforceable and easier for our sheriffs to maintain the safety of our residents in that space. So that is 100% a public safety measure that I support, putting through, and I, to Deputy Member Lyons, I agree, the 24,000 and the 76,000 is a great solution to that.
So is this brush management, or, I'm just asking, what is it?
No, so there's, there'll be some brush management.
Home management.
But it's really connecting the trails, so the trail actually makes a loop, and you could walk from one end and walk around.
Okay, because right now, it goes through to?
In and out.
No, right now, right now, there are two trails, one trail goes through the top, one trail goes through the bottom, Takaya Magdalena, and one trail goes through the top, and they're not connected, and we were out there, city manager staff will tell you, I think sheriff will tell you, whoever's here from that department, we probably saw three people coming down there who were not down there to go for a walk, I'll say, when we were down there in that time, and so we want to make sure that those residents feel safe, and this is the first step in doing that.
And the 100,000 is buying what services?
Staff could tell us that specifically.
Dave Knopf, please.
So the 100,000, one, we need a trail easement for the second half of the trail, so working through the, it's an existing trail that'll need some work, and then the connect will have to build trail, so this is building fencing security for that.
Okay, so there's some construction, I was wondering what made it 100,000, so, so it's connecting the two trails and actually implementing?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, I'm good with the 74. Moving on to bridge inspections?
Fully fund.
Fully fund.
Fully fund.
And that one, I would, that's another one that I would wait for the FEMA funds, because we have to defer something eventually, because I think so far, we're gonna be spending quite a bit, but I understand we need to do it, I'd leave it for mid-year with, depending on whether we get that, so, but it sounds like I'm not in the majority on this one, so that's fine.
Oh, sure.
Moving on to rail corridor quiet zone, just to confirm, there's nothing required in this budget, we're already funded for what we need for the next year, right?
Yes, we just wanted to go ahead, and because it came up, both the quiet zone and the at-grade crossings, so if Kelly could move a little bit, it just shows right now at 228 of 20, we have 700 encumbered, so we currently have funding in there, so we're not asking for additional funding, but we just wanted to put that, as well as the at-grade crossings, to let you know we are still working on both projects, and there's funding to continue those.
And it will not, the current funding keeps us going and will not slow us down on achieving those, correct?
It will not, so we are still finishing, just with the quiet zone, we should have that finished up with rail pros by the end of 2020, or end of fiscal year 2026, like July 20, I'm looking at jail.
We're gonna get to 90% design by July 2026, so we're still working through our design funding.
And currently, the at-grade crossings are at the CPU C.
Okay, Clark Avenue improvements for 85?
Fully fund.
Fully fund? Nod, fully fund? Marco, you're, you're outvoted, fully fund? No, I think you're in agreement, so, okay, moving on, corrugated metal pipe?
Half million.
Five, half million, and then reconsider dedicating quite a bit of the flood to that? Okay?
Yes.
So half million?
Yes.
And then economic development strategic plan?
Fully fund.
I agree.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, as there was talk about the chamber and funding, one of the things that we could do is if we're, since it looks like we have consensus on the economic development strategic plan, one of the things we could do is start that, and we could see what gaps we have and where we feel like the chamber or the 101s would fill that, and then we could look at additional funding at that time, just as a thought, since there's kind of gone, gone back and forth, this would give us a good roadmap of where economic development is and what we need to supplement and what organizations could help with that.
And is this a consultant primarily?
Yeah, this is to do the study, yeah, so we would, we would come up with an economic development strategic plan out of this 100,000, yes.
Habitat program, fully fund?
Yes.
Fully fund, anybody know? Moving on, general mobility improvements for 300,000.
Fully fund.
Fully fund.
Wow, do we have enough money? I feel like we're gonna go over.
No, you'll see, we keep going.
Okay.
We're pretty good.
I think we're gonna be okay.
Yeah, seriously, I have 98,000 right now if we don't fund the six and seven, so just keep going, we'll get there.
And then historic content for 140?
I didn't catch that, could you, that went really fast.
That was 300,000.
There is consensus.
I'm 100,000, but I'm gonna, I'm okay, I'm a minority here, my thought process is, this has gotten funged together with safer routes to school in the past, and I think there's even one other line item that we use almost interchangeably, and I'd like to see them all put in one bucket, and if we, and I question whether, one of the comments I heard from Abe, and I think Jill, you may have said the same thing, Abe said it. I heard from Abe, and I think Jill, you may have said the same thing, Abe said it, that we're getting near the end of a lot of the mobility improvements we need to do, that the curb ramps and whatnot. Is that true or not true?
I think that might have been a different project. This is largely how we fund resident requests. So when a resident asks for a crosswalk or a red curb or an RRFB, this is kind of how we fund those resident requests.
What was the fund that the...that funds the...I think it was curb cuts and pedestrian improvements around...was that the ADA funding?
Yeah, we've got 50,000 for ADA, and usually, we add that to our annual paving project, so that when we have to do curb ramps where we're paving a road, we use this external funding for those.
Okay. Let's see. Historic context, 140,000?
I'd like to see us come back to that personally. And just, I'd like to fund it, but I want to get...I think there's going to be leftover, and I'd like to fund that personally last.
I'll wait as well.
Okay, I got...I support it. Joy supports it.
I support it.
Maybe?
I do not support it.
Okay.
I support it, but I think if we get through this again, I think there's...we'll have to...there's going to be some math leftover.
Marco?
Just to get leftover, we just want to spend it, right?
I'm zero right now.
Zero. Okay, so I've got two zeros, two funds, and an in-between. We'll come back to it.
Correct.
I'll put a question mark next to that one. Let's see. 25 does not hit the general fund. Everybody's good with 750? Okay?
Well, just as a comment, 750, since it doesn't hit the general fund, I don't know that we're really agreeing to 750 right now, because I don't know exactly how we're going to spend that. But I would like to see more detail on that in the future.
Sure, we can do that. We can bring that back in introduction, but that's basically for design and permitting to start for L7. And just so you know, I looked back, and the design fees for Olympus Park, which was back in 2017, was 336,983. So looking now that we're 2025, it's also a much larger parcel, probably won't entail as many bells and whistles as Olympus Park, but it is a much larger parcel. So looking at that money, that's why, I mean, since that was 2017, and that was almost 350,000.
And this is park development fund?
It's...this is park...can only be used for that purpose.
And it also would come back here for appropriation.
Yes, it was.
That's my only comment, is that it'll come before us.
Yeah, we bring a contract back, absolutely.
It'll come before us. Okay.
At-grade crossing, I think we already discussed. And Lucadia Boulevard I-5 Bridge Repair for 350?
Fully fund.
Fully fund.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the next one. 28 is required. 29 is the pavement rehab.
600,000.
I had the same.
Same?
So with the goal, we'll go back and look at it. Same as Councilmember Schaefer.
With the FEMA, 600K?
Yes, and then FEMA backing it up.
Marco, any?
I was fully funded.
I was fully funded, too, but I'm willing to do the...the difference is, we're going to let a contract. I guess...
I would be in support of Councilmember Schaefer. I think you said what?
600,000.
600,000.
Okay. 600,000. And then come back and revisit it and potentially allocate part of any FEMA to that. Okay?
Next one's required.
And this is on top of the Transnet, HUTA, and SB1 funding that'll be on the order of 4.5, 4.3 million. So let's see. Resource management element mandatory, item 30, item 31. The South Vulcan Storm Drain Design?
Fully funded.
Fully funded. And fully funded, of course.
Yes.
I got three going for...Marco, yeah? Yes? Joy?
I'm not there. So I'm going to throw in a zero on that one. I know that's going to require more discussion, but let's continue.
Okay. And next one is safe routes to school for 200,000?
Fully funded.
Fully funded.
Fully funded.
I'm fully funded. Fully funded. That's 5-0. Moving on. Storm drain repair, 250?
Fully funded.
Fully funded.
Fully funded. I didn't hear any no's. Temporary fire station permitting for 400,000?
Fully funded.
Fully funded.
I'll fully fund, yeah.
All 5-0 again. Vulcan DG Ped Path Design, 175K?
Fully funded.
Fully funded.
That's unanimous, too. Good. And did we want to consider Cottonwood Creek signage? Just to bring up Brad Rothe, 25,000. I think that may come out of a different fund, possibly. Is that...what did you say in response to that? Somebody?
No, actually, Deputy Mayor Lyons said that he might be able to talk to Carolyn Cope of the Historical Society, because they have funding, so that might be a nice avenue to start with first.
I just wanted to give it time up here. So where are we on the total?
102. Should be good. Hey, not bad.
And we still...which one were we coming back to?
I want to go back to the Historical Society, and then I think Deputy Lyons wanted to talk about the South Vulcan Storm Drain. And this is the part where I was talking about that 1.7. I think, personally, I think we should take probably half a million out of that. I think that we should put...we should fully fund the calpers at 500,000, which is what we deferred back in, I don't forget what month, maybe February, because of where we are this year. And I think Tom could speak to it, that we'd get better benefits to the money in now. But...and I think that we should top off, I do think, the historic district statement. I think that we could get that money there. And then if there's anything else there that we needed to top off, I do think that that 1.7, just sitting there, I think it's appropriate right now. I think with all the other funding coming in, with, I think, with our mid-year budget typically having extra funds, it's a smart play on getting ahead, just like the pavement and the piping. I think our calpers is a smart play. It's also an investment in our employees and letting them know exactly how we feel about them, so.
I'd be careful in counting on too much mid-year, and Tom, I'd love to get your comments on this year with potential sales revenue being down. We, you know, property values, I think, are still going up, which is the majority, so that should keep our revenue increasing. But we don't know. Sales may drop a little, so it might not be as...there might not be as much additional mid-year money as we are used to seeing. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that would be fair to say, given...
What's a typical year...what's a typical year spending? What's the difference of what we see up, you know, in the block?
Oh, yeah. What's the range?
Yeah, in terms of where we end the year, as far as the carryover, it, I mean, it could range from, I mean, 2 million to 4 million, depending.
Okay, so we're in the 2 to 4 million. I'm talking about a half a million, and we can...we could correct that there. So that's exactly what I'm talking about. We're usually at 2 to 4 million. If even we drop down to a million, we'd still have the money to cover the half a million that we're taking now to put over that bucket and top them off.
In other words, we could, by the time we wanted to actually use it, once we learn and do what we have to do on Santa Fe West, we could replace the portion of general funds here and not dip further into our reserve.
Correct, because we won't get there by half here, more than likely, especially with what Western requires.
Yeah. I do want to point out, so we did double-check the amounts. You are about a quarter of a million over our target, so...which would require...that is the red, at the very top, the red box there, which is the balance.
Quarter with the additions. You just said it a quarter without, before.
That was before, yes.
Yeah. So if you fully fund calpers at 500,000, that would be an additional 250 deficit. And then what Councilmember Schaefer is proposing is, we could take the funding that's sitting there and borrow against the project. It's been done before, Haigia Rond about being an example, and we could put that over and balance this for the year, if we wanted to, or for six months, and have revisit when we get FEMA funding back, if we get it.
I would oppose that. I look at all of our pieces we're putting together here, and the goal is to get here next year with extra money and not to...so to cut everything as dry as we can here, not spend our money we don't have yet. And then when we get that money, which hopefully we will, and I think it's a good...sounds like a very reasonable bet, but we're not here to bet. We're here to base on what we have on this sheet. So I suggest we stick with the sheet, and we borrow when the money actually becomes available.
So are you suggesting we don't fund the 140 for historic?
Correct. I don't support funding the 140,000 for historic. It's a nice-to-have. I think we have to look at what we need to have. I would probably back off on the 250 until we get the rest of our money for calpers as well, because I think that balances our budget, if I'm correct.
Yeah.
And if we can balance our budget, I think that's where we need to be as a city council. We are walking into a lot of interesting things, and with the big world ahead of us. We have a bright future. If we balance the budget this year, we can do a lot more next year. So I'd rather see us put ourselves in a position where we're not borrowing against something, and after the fact, if calper...if the federal money doesn't come through, we're...now we're planning on something, and we've got to back something else off.
So just to clarify, the 250, are you saying don't fund even the 250 into the...
No, I'm saying don't add 250.
Don't add 250.
Correct.
And doesn't that leave us still at 240-something below?
To my assessment, we just took out $390,000, with the 140 and the 250, right?
With...so with the 140 not funded and the calpers at 250, is that the 242?
Yeah, it comes out to 390.
So we still have another 242 to cover?
That's just...
So can I jump in?
Yep.
Yeah.
So I just love our infrastructure, so I'm glad we've got so much infrastructure in here. But I want to pose a question. On Row 31, which is the South Vulcan Avenue Storm Drain, you know, I know that's needed. However, the 500,000, sounds like a budget, maybe not so much specific to what we absolutely know the first-year design and permitting would be. Jill, do you have any more you could give me on that? Because I would love to just be really more precise on what would we need the first fiscal year to kick that forward. And I'm thinking it might be less than 500,000, but please tell me your thoughts.
So typically, when we have a project where we have kind of a rough construction cost estimate, which is around $6 million, we take about 10%, and that's the design. So we went a little less than that, so that's how we got to 500,000. But until we reach out to our bench of consultants and ask for a scope and fee proposal, we won't know for sure what the actual design cost will be.
So we haven't reached out yet. We would...once we get kind of the okay, then we would do that. That would take a few months to put the scope out, and to take a couple other months for them to respond. Then it would take a few more months for procurement to go through. It's just the government process. It just takes that. So it'll be towards, you know, the third quarter of the fiscal year before we'd even get someone kicked off. This doesn't...I mean, I understand that $500,000 might represent what that contract might be, but I don't see needing to park $500,000 for this fiscal year.
So our guess is that 500,000 is about in the ballpark for how much the cost of the phase would be. So usually, what we would do is set that money aside, so encumber that money. So we wouldn't get invoiced for all that money, but our typical practice is that we would encumber that money. But we can approach differently if we want to try and phase it somehow.
And my recollection was, it was a little...back when it was estimated, back in 2022, it was 5.1 or something like that, so you rounded down to 500, and it's probably gone up by 10 or 20% minimum, maybe even 30%. So it's likely to be 600,000 that we're going to really need. Could be, but we don't...it kind of depends on the size of the project in the end.
Right.
And how many laterals we put in up the hill, but...
There's a lot of uncertainty as far as what it is. Yeah.
Sure. And a lot of uncertainty is also flexibility, but basically, we want to offload the 24-inch nuisance drain permanently and not have to use pumps and crews, because we'll start saving operational money as soon as we do that. So I didn't hear inputs from...as far as any other comments on...
I support keeping calpers at 250,000, based on all of the challenges of all of our other needs. And I'm glad to see that we have three council members supporting the historic context statement. I think that's a good start in the right direction. Thank you.
I would agree with leaving the 250 at calpers, but I still do think taking a portion of the 1.7 is appropriate.
That, or we have to find the 240?
We already have to find the 240 right now.
240.
So if we look at item 20?
Yeah. Yeah, we need to get it from somewhere.
So if we look at line 23, along the logic you've been talking, general mobility improvements, these are as we go along costs. This is an item where I think we could look to drop down to 200 or 250, and we could assess and add more to it down the road.
Councilmember O'Hara, yeah, looking at that, since that's 300 for a whole fiscal year, if you did drop that a little bit, we definitely have mid-year budget where we take that in February. So, you know, going through that, that could definitely work if you took maybe that down to 200, and then if we needed more come mid-year, we could ask for different appropriation.
Anybody with me on that?
I'd support you.
Support.
I'm there with you.
Yeah. I'm not. I know.
The mobility one?
I'd like to keep it at 300,000. We tend to use that.
And anybody want to reconsider, or I think we've got a 4-1 right there. And again, I put this in the category of mid-year or FEMA that we would look at.
I think it's general mobility or historic context statements, from what I hear, and you're not willing to give up your historic context statements. So where do we get the money, then?
Well, we still have 100,000 we're looking for, right? 198?
I'll bring up the South Vulcan again, in that it's 500,000, and it was ranked number 56 on our Infrastructure Task Force list, which our citizens weighed in on. And I think we could start it out this year without...and characterize a phase of it and move it forward without obligating the full 500,000. And so if anyone might consider that, that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I would oppose that. Tom, can you...well, maybe you did roll down. What did you put in for the general mobility? Did you put 150 or 200?
We have it for 200,000.
And what was...I thought 150 was the proposal. I guess maybe it was 150 or 200,000.
The city manager said 200. We agreed with that.
Yeah, I would think, because if we did mid-year, it would be February, not really, you know, by the time we take mid-year. So this way, if we're spending about 300 a year, that would get us the 200 to be okay, and we can make that up.
And then, just to clarify, on my notes, Councilmember Schaefer, were you okay with the 140 on the historic context, which was 24? There was kind of a question on that one?
I'm okay taking the money from the 1.7.
Okay.
I am, too, so.
So what are we making up right now? What's the 142?
142. Plus the 140, so it'd be 282.
I mean, in my mind, it's holding it either in that bucket or putting it into the 500,000 unassigned. You know, and you take the 142 out of the unassigned, knowing I've got 1.7 million sitting in a project that will not move forward for probably the whole year, depending on what happens with...so we can do it either way. And it's cash and general fund money either way. So, you know, this is a pure budgeting exercise and nothing more. It's not changing the cash position, unless we go and kill a item on here, right, which is what we're talking about now. So do we kill an item? What's the lowest hanging fruit on here? Or do we just decide whether we take it out of the unassigned 500,000 or out of the project that probably won't use the cash?
Yeah, that's an interesting perspective. So thanks for that. Yeah.
Yeah. And just as easily as it comes out of the 1.7, it can go back in mid-year or later in the year. And I think we'll know a lot more at that time about Santa Fe West and its prognosis, and we can decide where...
I want to go on the record as opposing discussion about the 1.7 million dollars. We don't know what that's going to be and how much we're going to have there. Just for the record, I think if we're talking about money that we don't have, that's the way we get in trouble.
What do you...
I want to go in the record as opposing discussion about the 1.7 million dollars. We don't know what that's gonna be and how much we're gonna have there. Just for the record, I think if we're talking about money that we don't have, that's the way we get in trouble.
So given that, I would like to propose that we look at the unassigned fund balance. I'm aligned with Councilmember Herrera on that. So given what he said, I would look at the unassigned fund balance to reduce, to accommodate.
I am as well. I prefer a balanced budget from money that we have.
So.
I oppose it.
Can I go back to Line 23 to remove that? Do we, what was our agreeance on that or non-agreance in the end?
I think we're agreed 4-0 that that goes to 200,000, and that'll cover us at a nominal burn rate until February, when we would have a mid-year budget review. And so we might have two opportunities to refill this, if FEMA comes in and then mid-year budget review, most likely being mid-year.
And if we take it from the 1.7 now, the unassigned, and we don't use it, or we do need it, the unassigned, we have it in the unassigned, so we're basically, take it from the 1.7 now, we have the unassigned fully if we don't use it all, plus the mid-year.
Yeah.
It gets us, it does balance our, but it's a rounding error at this point. It's a, it, it gets us where we need to go. We could fulfill our duties to Santa Fe East. It just makes too much sense to have it now, get everything funded, and have the 500,000 for, I don't know, Swami Stairs going out of, out of whack or something crazy.
Overages and things like that.
It's the whole deal. So now we, we are balanced, we have it all, and we're not getting to the east anytime soon.
I mean, we've, we typically nominally have historically tried to have 2 million in unassigned, you know, in our budgeting cycle. We're, we're getting closer. I think we're tightening up our budgeting too. We've gone to 1 million one year that I've been on council as our budgeted unassigned balance. And then during the year, as we burn it down, we've gone down to 49,000, right? You know, so I, this is, Tom knows, I'm, I'm constantly asking, what's the unassigned balance? I just want to know that. It's the cash flow you have, right, before you have to dip into your reserves? So the good news is beyond this, we have operational reserves and we have, what's the other?
Budget stabilization.
Budget stabilization to the tune of?
Yeah, 2% of overall revenue, so. 2 million.
Yeah, 2, 2 million.
Looking up there, it says 124, right? And I, I keep coming back to the one thing of what do we need, what do we not need? $140,000 sitting right there, don't need it. It's not a needed, it's not a needed item. End the whole conversation right here if we just drop that at the moment, but. I, I don't believe in borrowing money we don't have yet, and I don't know that any of us know what's gonna happen on Santa Fe. So I'm incredibly reluctant and throw in a huge amount of caution to even consider that money, anything, until it is decided what's gonna happen up there.
I'm also, I mean, I, I can appreciate the Historic, what's it called? The Historic Context Statement. I, I can see the value in it, but, I mean, I, for me, I, it's still a zero because I, there's, I mean, to balance this thing, if that's what we need, I don't see that we need it right now. It is, it is a nice to have, but I completely agree with.
I, I think I'm gonna agree, and, and for now, and I'll put it this way. It'll, that way, it's in the reserve, and if we decide later we do want to fund it, it would come out of, and reserve. It's in the unassigned balance, and we can always just fund it. But to get to a balanced budget tonight, and it's kind of interesting in that the difference was right around 140,000 too, so. But it is probably in the mandatory necessary need spectrum, closer to the nice to have, I think is how you put it, Jim. So I'll, I'll go with you now and say, for now, no on the 140, but we could reconsider it in the future, and that's, it a lot depends on what happens with the unassigned general fund budget, you know, and availability of that funds. If it goes down to 49,000, we won't be funding this, but if it, if it gets bigger and goes up to a million dollars, this might be one of the opportunities we fund. But we do want to get to a balanced budget tonight. And, and I think what we could do is I would propose not funding this tonight and taking the 2,000 out of the 500,000. So you'd have 498 change, or 497 and change.
Mayor? I'm pretty sure we can find a couple thousand dollars to round that to 500 by the time we do introduction to budget. So we'll, we'll make that an even 500 when, when we come for introduction to budget.
No, no, you gave us spreadsheets so that we had to get it to the fifth decimal point.
I did, but that's killing me not to have a round number. So since it's, since it's less than 3,000, I'm pretty sure we can see where we can find that.
Who said OCD is a bad thing, right?
I just want to say one thing. Chamber, I, I mean, you can see how tight this was. I completely appreciate what you guys do for the city, for what you do for the businesses. I have my own business, so I can completely appreciate it. But I just, when it comes down to it and we had to balance this budget, you can see how tight it is, and really what we really need for the cities, not that you always don't provide a wonderful service. So I just want to say, if, when we bring it back, I, I fully want to look at it again and, and try to get you guys what you need. But this is, clearly was so important, so, and like I said, I don't devalue what you guys do. It's, you guys do great work.
Yeah, and I echo, I think to Councilmember San Antonio's point, all of the projects on here are projects that we want to do. These aren't projects we want to fall off the table and not happen. These are all projects that are priorities that we want to do. Tonight, we have to make a decision on how to best set the financial priorities of this city. And I think, I feel really good about decisions everybody here has made. And it really sets us up so that next year, I think, we're here with more funds, more availability to do things. And the things that are nice to have, everybody's goal appears to make those on this list. So I, I, I don't think anybody should expect anything to fall off here. These are still priorities. It's just we had to make decisions on what happens today.
Yep, and I appreciate the Chamber too, I understand. But this is, this was, you know, we, we have some basic priorities that have been neglected, and, and this is the first big step towards funding basic infrastructure, safety. And I come back to, would we rather clean up the crime downtown and attract people that way? Or market them with the crime still there? Let's get the crime fixed, and then we'll, we'll get the marketing fixed. So hang in there. With that, are there any other questions, comments from staff? You got everything you need?
We do. Thank you very much.
And thank you for keeping real time in there and following us.
Thank you.
I think that's it, right? We're, with that, I'll adjourn. We're adjourned. Thank you.